I will now call the May 1st, 2017 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, none of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you and attendance as well as those that might be watching on cable TV to tonight's City Council meeting. Next we have the consent agenda, there is a meeting to be pulled, if not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carriage unanimously.
Next we have a public hearing on an annexation of right-of-way for a portion of eastbound 40 Highway.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Community development packet with the following attachments: site location map, site aerial map, legal description and survey map listed as Exhibit A, affidavit of publication in the examiner on Saturday, April 8, 2017, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, copy of letters of no objection from adjacent municipalities, copy of letter of notification to Lake Tapawingo, comment request letter responses to, comment response letter mailed, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4487 annexing the property. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank your honor. Apologies, we have the wrong council agenda up here. But with that, I do want to mention that we do have right-of-way annexation requests before you. This is at the request of the city. The area in question is the right-of-way eastbound 40 Highway near Indigo Hill subdivision. Drawing attention to your packet, the site location is, again, essentially predominantly along the Indigo Hills frontage, eastbound 40 Highway, all the way to Hickory Woods. It's about 1,200 feet in length roughly. And the city has been going through, working with MODAT for the last couple of months, actually, to go through this request, which involves canvassing essentially the neighboring area in terms of other jurisdictions, including Lake Tapawingo, the county, as well as neighboring property owners. With that, staff has actually met with one of the neighboring property owners to inquire upon their interest in possibly joining this annexation. They have deferred that at this point. They may show some interest in annexing later on, and therefore, we are now prepared to bring before you this request here tonight. Again, this would be a public hearing and only first reading of the ordinance with a delay required by state statute to the following meeting in order to take that matter up in its finality. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, and if you have any questions about location, I'll try to pull up the map here as we discuss that.
Certainly, this has been a long process, I believe. I raised the issue about three years ago.
Right.
As I drive 40 Highway and I see the city limits sign at Hickory Wood instead of Indigo Hill, said, "Why aren't that sign back there where Blue Springs start?" And so, this has been a long process in getting to this point, so I'm just pleased that we finally got there. Any comments from the council? All right, we'll go to the public. Is there in the one audience, like, speaking in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? We close this public hearing. Introduction.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4487, an ordinance annexing a portion of U.S. eastbound 40 Highway right-of-way to the city of Blue Springs.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Okay, we just need a first reading only tonight, and then we'll...
Second.
We've got a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, and it will be second read at the next council meeting. All right, next we have a public hearing on a rezoning of Blue Ridge Bank.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, zoning map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 8, 2017, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, two letters dated April 13 and 17, 2017, by Third Axis Investments LLC, letter from Richard and Kendra Lee dated April 24, 2017, and Bill Number 4488 approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
All right. And on behalf of the city...
Thank you, Mayor Ross and councilors. Before you today is the request from the applicant, Jay Barnhart, to rezone a 15-acre parcel from SF7, which is single-family residential along the southern portion of the property, which you can see on the map above, and MF14, which is moderate-density multifamily in the northern portion of the property. And they want to rezone the entire site to MF10, low-density multifamily residential. The site is situated between a major collector, AA Highway, to the north, as well as light industrial and general business to the north. And then, to the south, there are single-family homes. This situation, or the location, suggests that there is a need for a transitional area between these zoning districts. This request went before the planning commission on April 24, 2017, received a recommendation of approval with a vote of seven ayes and one no. Likewise, staff also recommends approval. Upon a conclusion of this public hearing, a bill rezoning Blue Ridge Bank 300 block of AA Highway will be ready for introduction and readings. With that, staff will stand for any questions.
Question, Mr. Drury? Question from council? Standing by. We will... Is there the developer or representative here, like, to come and be sworn in? Come right over, come... Come right here and be sworn in. Yes. Jay Barnhart.
I'm... We're doing exactly what it says, we just want to rezone it, and there has been some questions about a HUD project going in, and that is not our intentions whatsoever, and I want to reassure one of that. It is a townhome project, more of an executive-style community with a clubhouse, a pool, but there... I want to just confirm that there is not a HUD project going into the... on that site. I have... There's no intent of that at all.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Barnhart from the council? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, your honor. This is rezoning, and this is probably not the, you know, the... you know, the right time to talk about fencing, but it was brought up at the planning commission. Some of the residents around there, they have submitted information to the city, and we see it in our packets, got some pictures, things like that. They were concerned about the height of a fence. It's six feet proposed, and I guess they were after eight feet. Any feedback on that?
Well, we never proposed a six-foot fence for one. For two, I believe that an eight-foot fence is not legal. It would take a...
That's against our codes, you're saying?
It's... I don't believe it is. I don't think that eight-foot fence is to code. It would take a, you know, a variance to have an eight-foot fence, and...
Okay, staff, you want to comment on that?
He is correct. A six-foot fence is allowed, and an eight-foot fence is only allowed in commercial districts.
Okay.
So we're not the ones that are...
All right.
Not in compliance.
Okay.
If that makes sense, so...
But I would imagine that their primary concern is screening period, so out... Trees are not prohibited, so maybe that's something to consider.
I'm sorry, we have no problem at all complying with any landscape...
Right.
...design. I mean, there's... And we want it to be a nice project. This is going to be an upscale project, and we have to make it look good. I mean, these are going to be somewhere between 1,200 and 1,500 dollars a month for rent. So, I mean, we... It's on us to make it work.
Right. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in audience want to speak in support of? Here to speak in support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Do you have a call?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Levisay.
All right, Richard Lee, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you want to be sworn in?
Yes. My name is Richard Lee, and I live on Sunnyside School Road, which is to the right side of this image here. We've got the... Kind of a larger than normal lot there. We've got like 440 feet on it, on the right-hand side. But anyway, I'd like to read a statement I have here. It said, "We've been told by the Blue Springs Community Development that this proposed site was put up a six-foot solid fence and have a 30-foot setback. We have a heightened concern since our property has 440 feet that borders the eastern side, plus our land slopes down from the area. We need an eight-foot fence with a 30-foot setback that will reduce the negative effects to our property. We built our custom home back in 2011, and at that time, we thought we were safe since the land behind us was zoned single-family. Now, we just want to have a minimum negative effect since... Negative... A minimum negative effect since this city is trying to change its mind on how the land is zoned. We also know this venue cannot mandate our requirements, but we want to voice it since this may be the last time we have to have our concerns considered. Please ensure that the city will protect the rights of its current citizens and not let developers try to make a quick profit at the expense of its longtime residents. Developers won't be living in these units or even close to them, so they really don't care what happens, so long as they make a good profit." And that's my statement."
Let me go back to staff again. Is there provision... There's no provision for a variance to make things more restrictive?
Not at this time. If... We cannot require any additional restrictions unless they go through a different process than just what's allowed by code.
And again, we're not requiring it. They're wanting that, and it sounds like the developer doesn't have a problem with it. So basically, because what's not, you're not making it less restrictive, you're making it more to please the adjacent property owners. And so, I think we need to take a look at that and see if there's a way that we can allow it to be more. You understand what I'm saying? To be higher. That... The other suggestion I'd have is maybe trees that would give them some kind of a buffer between that project and their project, or their homes, rather.
I will mention at this time, this is just a rezoning, and as a rezoning, we are not allowed to condition it, but staff can definitely recommend during the site plan and design review process of the multifamily, any of these considerations brought before us today.
Good. Good. I want to get it on the record, so that's something we can consider when that particular part is discussed during the other site deliberations are taking place. Okay, thank you.
I guess my only point is, when I spoke with Jim Holly a couple of times over this about in the office, he acted like there would be a good possibility of getting an eight-foot fence there, because, like I say, our house is a new house, built in 2011, there wasn't any trees on there at all. And like I say, our property sits lower, and we've put a lot of money in this place. And like I say, when we started this, it was back in 2011, when everything was zoned single-family, so we thought we were safe, so we just wanted to have some extra assurance that our value would be protected.
Well, I think it's duly noted what the concerns are, so...
Okay.
And then, there's a process to get that done, and I guess I'm as stoked when I said "less restrictive."
Okay.
But everybody knew what I meant, right? As long as you know what I mean, that's what's important.
Okay, thank you.
As I was saying, it's not what I say, it's what I mean.
(laughing) Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't have any other forms. Standing by. We'll close this public hearing. Introduction and reading of Bill 4488.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4488, an ordinance rezoning property from SF7, single-family, and MF14, moderate-density multifamily, to MF10, low-density multifamily.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4488, an ordinance rezoning property from SF7, single-family, and MF14, moderate-density multifamily, to MF10, low-density multifamily.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carriage unanimously, given ordinance Number 4658.
Next we have a public hearing on the amended plan unit development concept plan for Ridgewood Place at Chapman Farms.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Exhibit Number 1, Planning Commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, modifications made to PUD concept plan, development maps, color renderings, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 8, 2017, applications with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, four emails from residents, site map and from Matt Schlicht, home size plan from Matt Schlicht, revised PUD CC presentation from Matt Schlicht, email from Amanda Brady dated April 24, 2017, and Bill Number 4489 approving amended PUD concept plan. Additionally, we had Exhibit Number 2, which entails 23 resident emails received between Saturday, April 30 through May 1, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you, at this time. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, mayor and councilman. Before you this evening is a request for an amended PUD concept plan for Ridgewood Place at Chapman Farms, which includes approximately 34.48 acres north of southeast Mason School Road and east of Greenbrier and Shore subdivisions. This does include 104 single-family lots with seven common tracks. My preliminary plat, I'll kind of go back through the process of this, there's a lot of questions on how we got to this point. So the preliminary plat was first approved by the planning commission in November 2015 for this property. Staff does acknowledge that the approval of the original preliminary plat should have included a PUD concept plan to increase the density to 105 lots, and also to establish the minimum lot sizes, widths, and setbacks. These errors were not realized until late December 2016, when a PUD final plan and final plat were submitted. At that time, since the lot... The number of lots, lot sizes, and widths had been approved with the preliminary plat, the focus on the first concept plan was to approve setbacks and minimum livable floor area classifications that were greater than one step below the adjacent subdivisions. Planning Commission recommended denial of the first concept plan, and the applicant withdrew the application before city council. A second concept plan was submitted in early February, which made some revisions based on the concerns expressed during the first concept plan. The second concept plan made it a requirement that all homes have three-car garages and increased the square footage of homes so that it met the step-down approach outlined in the UDC. Planning Commission recommended approval of the second concept plan and went to the city council, but was continued due to inclement weather. The applicant did withdraw the second concept plan after further discussion with staff, as it was recommended after further analysis of the plan, the approval process, and the PUD standards, that the applicant restart the entire approval process, including going back to the preliminary plat and new concept plan, which is where we're at this evening. There are multiple items being requested through this PUD concept plan, all of which fall under the 1996 UDC, which was in effect when the overall Chapman Farms PUD was approved in 2004 and amended in 2006 and 2007. The first and primary request is in regards to the density, which is included in the staff report. Anything that includes an increase in density over 2% requires the concept plan to be amended, so that is one of the reasons... The main reason why we're looking at this this evening. The initial PUD concept plan, when it was last approved in 2007, there were 771 units that were zoned single-family on 357.8 acres, which amounted a little over 2.15 units an acre. Under the current proposal, they're adding additional 21 units to that, so 792 units, the same acreage, 357.8, for a density of 2.21 units an acre. The difference between the dense... The units per acre there is a 2.69% increase over the 2%, so that is the primary reason for the amendment to the concept plan. The other items that... The 1996 PUD standards also permit minimum lot sizes, widths, and setbacks to be established through the PUD concept plan. That was not... That was not completed, and so that's another item that is being done, requested this evening. Under the PUD standards, there are no minimum lot sizes, widths, or setbacks, and therefore, they must be established through this concept plan. These are modifications that are legally allowed under the UDC through the PUD standards, as opposed to variances, which are items that do not meet any standards in the UDC that must go through the Board of Adjustment. The applicant is requesting to establish a minimum lot size of 66 hundred square feet, a minimum lot width of 60 feet, and minimum exterior setbacks of 20 feet for lots 21 through 44, and 63 through 70, minimum interior side yard setbacks of five feet for lots 21 through 44, and 63 through 70, and then seven feet setbacks for lots 14 through 20, 45 through 62, 71 through 85, and 100 through 104, and then eight feet would be required for all the other lots. The applicant has also provided the minimum floor area classifications shown on the screen. The largest homes are 2,200 square feet minimums for two-story, and 1,800 square feet for three-car garage ranch along the north property boundaries adjacent to the shores. They have also increased the size of the two-story homes to 2,000... I'm sorry, they've met the 2,000-square-foot requirement for the five lots that back up to Greenbrier, and have removed any reference to ranches, which they will no longer allow on those lots, provide sort of a step-down from the two-story homes that are primarily in Greenbrier to the ranches that will be developed to the east. And then, the lots outlined in blue are five lots where they've increased the ranch homes from 1,400 square feet to 1,600 square feet to provide a broader transition between the two-story homes and the ranches. And then, the lots outlined in green are also 2,000-square-foot two-story homes, 1,600-square-foot ranches, and then the lots in purple would be the smallest minimums with 1,400-square-foot ranch homes and 1,800-square-foot two-story. The lots that are shaded pink underneath there, those would be the predominantly 1,400-square-foot plus ranch homes. A cover letter was also provided in the agenda packet that addresses what changes have been made since the last submittal. And then, a landscaping plan will also be approved with the PUD final plan. Concept plan of the community pool will also be submitted for review with the PUD final plan, as well as a construction timeline for the pool. Staff does recommend approval of the PUD concept plan with seven conditions, with the seven conditions... With condition number seven being amended by the planning commission, they're showing that the concept plan of the community pool and then the construction timeline being provided. The planning commission also did approve a preliminary plat with nine conditions that matches the PUD concept plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions in the council, or Mr. Wright?
I have a question for staff. Relative to... I think staff alluded to that there was a previous public hearing on this, that because of weather, it was terminated, and then I relate that back to the exhibits that were mentioned here earlier that were entered into record. I guess I'm curious to know if the emails that we received back for that prior meeting are in this public record, because I heard the dates, and it sounded like it's the current emails and not the ones that occurred more than probably a month ago. So are those... All those... That group of emails that were in the last?
Those group of... That group of emails did stay with that public record. This is... Since this is a new application, there's a new public record associated with it, so those did not carry over with that, but we still have those on file with that application.
But they are not part of this public record?
Correct.
Because I thought... I thought I'd heard that there was follow-up investigation of that.
Your honor, if I may, I had requested that those items be included as a single exhibit on this particular hearing.
With those?
We do still have all of those exhibits, including the items that were received after the public hearing had started and before the... It was continued to another date, and then the application was subsequently withdrawn, so we do have all of those exhibits still available that we can enter into the public record.
Councilman Carter?
Yeah. I'd like to go back to the beginning on this thing, because I find it very confusing from the start. It seems like we're going from 80-something lots to 100-something lots, but when I look at the purchase contract from the land bank, some of custom homes purchased this piece of property with the idea of putting 105 lots on this. So how did we get from 105 to 80-something? And then, my next question is, how in the world did we do a preliminary plat without a public hearing, which causes a lot of this heartache that we have tonight?
Okay. The first... Well, I'll start with the second item. The preliminary plat does not require any public hearing. There's no formal public process with that, other than just a... An application of planning commission that the planning commission reviews, but it's not... There's no formal public hearing. And then, Mr. Allen can answer the land bank contractor if that's something that...
Well, and to add to that, your honor, Councilman Carter, what Mr. Wright was saying earlier was that there should have been, in retrospect, a PUD concept plan application with that previous preliminary plat, and that's the public hearing that we're referring to. So that's why we are where we are tonight, which really should have occurred as well back in November 2015. So through the whole process between then and now, we've essentially reset the applications, and that's why we have the process before you this evening. Terms of the land bank, I may defer to City Administrator Johnson, but there was some discussion in advance of the purchase from the land bank by the applicant here to look at 105 lots with their long-term proposal to move forward in order to meet their financial scenario and also still be within the parameters of the Neighborhood Improvement District sanctuary sewer capacity. So that's where that 105 number came from. The 83 lots were in reference to the original PUD concept plan with the overall Chapman Farms project, referenced to Lot 10. So you may have heard or seen Lot 10 being referred to this property in the past, that's referring to the original Chapman Farms plan, PUD concept plan in 2004, and that was identifying that as 83 lots. Briar Valley was a preliminary plat, as Mr. Wright referenced, back in 2007, that then changed that to 86 lots as it was refined, and that then sat vacant, became, you know, expired, and then here we are today, into 2015 now, 2017.
Did that answer what you needed?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Councilman Fowler?
Well, I guess as a flow in the process, in that you didn't mention a PUD that occurred in like 2004 to '07, somewhere in there, and I understand that was for all the Chapman Farms area, but this land, that developer, I guess, went bankrupt, and they stopped paying taxes on the land, and the land ultimately ended up in a land bank. So the current owners of the property, they didn't go through and make the application for a PUD, and they didn't buy it from the owner that had submitted as a PUD. How did they just get grandfathered for a PUD that wasn't on the land when they bought it?
The property is... It's part of a PUD, and it has the restricted overlay that applies to all Chapman Farms, so that those PUD standards could... We could be dealing with those well into the future until the entire part of Chapman Farms is developed. So, you know, we could still... If there's still property vacant for 10, 20 years, even 20 years from now, they still are under that concept plan, so if there's any changes to that, they would have to amend that concept plan. to that, they would have to amend that concept plan.
All right, clear. Anyone else? Okay. Would the developer or representative like to come and be sworn in?
Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Leesum, Missouri. Well, hopefully we have better luck than we did last time we were here, when we had the tornado sirens, when I was standing at this very spot. So, my plan is to kind of give a brief idea, I guess, of kind of where we were and what we did, allow you to ask questions, because I don't want to go back through the whole presentation unless you'd like me to. For the last time, we kind of went through the presentation of the home values we expect out there, the development of how we anticipated to be developed in kind of three different pods, the character and architectural style of the buildings. So again, I have all that information, happy to go through it, but I think for brevity, we'll slowly push on unless you guys have questions about that. Since the last meeting, when we left, we had many meetings with staff, and we had some meetings with council members to try to figure out where we were and how to move forward. You know, kind of as we described this process of where we were, we got here basically doing what we understood as the process, and staff, I think at that point, understood as the process, to get to that council meeting, where we were approving the subdivision you saw before you, with 105 lots on it, not trying to go around any rules, not trying to bend, break, or move anything else, we just did what we thought was right, we did what I think staff thought was right. So following the last council meeting, we had another meeting with staff where it became apparent that they believed the best thing would be to do, as Matt says, is reset. Let's do this correctly, and that the preliminary plat should have had a PUD concept plan with it. So essentially, we're in front of you today, asking for a PUD concept plan. The only difference is, is we have $1.5 million in the ground in Phase 1 city. We're not saying that in a sense of trying to cause sympathy or place blame, but just simply say, the process has not been smooth, and we're at a spot where we have what we thought was a correct development, ready to go, but yet we're asking for kind of the preliminary approval of it. So, in this process, some of the residents have raised concerns, and we've tried to work and change and amend this plan through the many meetings we've had, and some of the council members have worked very hard to try to kind of find a middle ground between us, and try to create something that's out there that will continue to develop as well as the area has. It's been, it's been a great area over there for the last, you know, three, four, five years of selling homes. So my idea is that, you know, we're going to kind of go through the things that we changed from our original plan, from our original preliminary plat, and kind of just explain to you what we've done to try to reach the plan that's in front of you today, and then simply answer any questions we can. So, from our original plan, we went through and we've changed, and every home in this subdivision will have three-car garage. So we had a couple that had two-cars, some that had three-car. The two-car were in our heritage series, which is kind of our maintenance-provided, more professional living, senior living, you know, it's not, it's not an age-restricted area, but it's our idea that that's going to be more of a upper-end, maintenance-provided, lock-the-door-if-you-want-to-go kind of facility. So, everything in there's three-car garages. The minimum square footage, the minimal floor area in the entire subdivision, has been increased to meet the UDC. So originally, our original plan had some variations in there that didn't work with the step-down approach, and so what we've done, and that's what this map is, is kind of our, our approach that brings every lot into the subdivision and into compliance with your code. The home values has been a big conversation out here, and home values is a very difficult thing for anybody to prove or disprove. So what we provided to you on the slides, and I can bring them back up, we provided for you a very specific unit cost for every phase of our development, for the three pods, for our signature, our lifestyle, and our heritage, and showed that in there, our costs, or our projected costs, and these are based on homes that we're currently building in the metro area, are higher than any of the existing subdivisions around us, and we're certain of these numbers in the sense that we've built in every one of these developments around us. So, in the sense of home values, the only thing we can provide, and the thing that we're providing, is good sales data from the past three and four years of this very product or similar product to in this area and KC Metro Y. The kind of purple region down here that is our heritage section is the area where we went, and originally we had it called a villa section. Essentially, it's not intended to be villa, because we think that puts too much of a stigma of being a senior. It is truly a heritage section where it's a person who is a single mom with some kids, a young professional, the empty nesters, or maybe it is that senior, but it's the idea being that you're not doing the maintenance on the yard. You're not doing the maintenance of taking the snow, you're still taking care of your house, but everything on the outside is maintained by the HOA. There's a sub-HOA setup that these residents pay specifically for. There's no fences allowed out there, so it makes it much larger green space, so while these lots are smaller in size, the overall effect is still, they still feel like a big open green space area. Additionally, the original plan for this development had no amenity. It had 11% green space, which we, we continue to abide by, but it had nothing else with it. So we've added a swimming pool. There's a trail that's intended to go between Greenbrier and Ridgewood Place that we've agreed to incorporate into our facility, that'll work its way up and work its way into the shores, where there's a walking trail, some workout facilities, some amenities out there around the lake, that we feel will be a great community amenity for that area. Since our last meeting, we've taken a lot out of this west side at the request to make the residents of Greenbrier not feel like they're looking back at all of those smaller heritage homes. So the developer has removed one lot entirely from that area. He also took the remaining five lots and increased them from 60-foot wide to 66-foot wide. Now, we talked to the Planning Commission, the notes are there, so I won't go into too much detail to it, but basically the 66-foot wide width was decided upon, because again, if you remember, we have structure and facilities in the ground, and so at 66 feet wide, I can still use the sanitary sewer, the water, the storm, the streets, and everything that's in the ground today, and not have to physically go in and dig some brand-new construction up to reset it. So, what we've also agreed to in this area is to make these lots no longer be heritage series. They've moved up to a lifestyle series where we're not going to allow a ranch. They're going to be two-story homes, similar in character and nature and size to what's in Greenbrier. So the only difference between the lots in Greenbrier and the lots that are over here would be, we're asking for a side yard setback of 5 foot as opposed to 8 foot, just to allow us to set that larger home in there with that two-story look. So it's, it's going to give the feel over this 170 feet of space between the two lots that there's still that similar look and feel between the two. Now, I've created a map, so you can kind of get some representation and feel. The white is the trail that we worked to kind of put between the two. Over here, these are the existing homes in Greenbrier, and the blue would be the lots that we're talking about where we're building. And again, there's 170 feet between those backyard-to-backyard property lines, so there's a ton of space in relation to what, you know, as if you look at other backyard-to-backyard looks, where you'd be property line to property line. We go back here. On these lots here in the blue, we've agreed to go back in and increase the minimum floor area for those five lots to make them a step up from what would be allowed in this kind of purple section, and what would be our original heritage section. So again, what we've done is it's still going to be a heritage home for this purple area, but we've agreed to take two of our home floor plans that are under 1,600 square feet off the list, and so we'll build everything that's 1,600 square feet or larger in that area. So again, to try to make the transition from a Greenbrier two-story home to the lifestyle two-story home to a ranch feel more compatible as you're going across this subdivision. Additionally, the developer has agreed, a number of the residents have been concerned about the pool. Our comment and discussion of the pool is that if the pool is constructed today and turned over to the HOA, the HOA cannot currently fund, it will create a deficit on the HOA to have it operational. What the developer has agreed to do is make a financial contribution of up to $20,000 to carry that pool and the HOA through what we believe will be two years of projection. By, by two years from now, there should be enough home sales generated in the HOA budget to be able to carry that pool by itself. So the developer has agreed that spring of '18, he'll install the pool and get it in in good faith so the developer, or the residents in the neighboring areas and communities can start using it while this development continues to grow. The trail that was between the two lots was originally just kind of shown conceptually further to the west. The residents have asked that we'll move that to the east and more centrally located in that common space, which we agreed to do. We've also agreed to go in there and add some additional landscaping. We've also agreed to go in there and add some additional landscaping that is a six-foot height minimum, so the city standards right now say that it's a 2-and-a-half-inch caliper, well, it's difficult to understand what that is, nobody knows what a 2-and-a-half-inch caliper tree means, so. So we've basically put in there that we would agree, that we could find trees, evergreens, and deciduous, that would be six feet height in minimum to start providing a barrier today, as opposed to down the road. From the meeting we had at the Planning Commission, some of the residents' concerns that I think are out there, and through emails, I think that I've seen, you know, a lot of them revolve around the property values, home size, lot size, or similarity of these uses. You know, like I said, we've provided the detailed information that we have of constructible and sellable costs that we believe is out there on those homes, so in our belief, you know, home values are not going to diminish because of this development. This development is going to continue to drive this area. The pod approach, or the three different independent markets we're creating in this area, is something that we've shown and found across the metro that helps to provide good growth in an area and a sustainable growth, which is what this area obviously needs and everywhere else does as well. The pool construction, obviously, was a big concern. The other one that is a big concern in most of the residents' eyes and emails is the talk about comparing our subdivision to an SF-7 zoning district. And I think staff presented it well today. It's the same thing that they've been telling us, is that, you know, this PUD concept plan that we brought for you is what's set to establish that. So in comparing us directly to an SF-7 zoning district isn't what is allowable or required by this area. This area is under a PUD, it's under a planned development, it's actually SF-7RO is how it was designed, which was the developer establishes all of the lot sizes, the setbacks, and the areas with this plan. The mistake that was made in oversight through the process was when the preliminary plat went through in '15, the PUD concept plan should have been with it, and that was just an oversight simply by, by the process. We don't need to point fingers at how it happens, but that's where we are, is that it didn't happen. And so that's kind of where we are, and that's what we're saying, we're kind of resetting this and bringing forward this plan to show how we got to where we are. I believe that is everything. The only other thing that was brought up at the Planning Commission member, or at the meeting, was a lot of discussion on the HOA, you know, and we have a representative of the HOA here. I just don't know that this is an appropriate time or discussion place for those types of items, so we're here to happy to answer those questions, but I, I guess I'd ask, this probably is not the appropriate place to ask or discuss that. So, I'll see if you have questions.
Any questions? And counsel?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of? In support of? If you do? All right, okay. And opposition, too? I have three speaker appearance forms. We have Jason Brady. Jason, you want to come up and be sworn in?
While they're getting the slides ready, I'll go ahead and start, because the first thing I'd like to bring up then isn't, I mean, like you mentioned, we're going to talk about SF-7, obviously. That's what we talked about at the Planning Commission last time, and I feel like I'm missing something, because when we go out and we look at these Planning Commission reports, and right on the front it says, "Existing zoning SF-7, single-family." When you go look at the Planning Commission report, or staff report, it says lot size, the preliminary plat meets the minimum lot size requirements for SF-7 zoning, minimum setbacks, preliminary plat meets the minimum lot setbacks required for SF-7 zoning. So, I'm missing something here that maybe I need to explain to me, because we keep seeing that this is zoned, is that in the report, it even says it's meeting these standards, which we're ready to argue about, that it doesn't, and so, I mean, that is a big portion of why we have a problem with this.
Were you going to proceed, or you just?
I'm waiting for an answer, actually. How is it, how is it not SF-7 zoning when the staff reports and the agendas and everything we've been looking up and researching on our own time says it is, and then we prepare for that and show up, and then we're told it's not? I'm missing something here.
Ms. Wright, you want to, you want to take a shot at that?
So the property is zoned SF-7 with a restricted overlay, and that restricted overlay represents the PUD, and there are no minimum standards in a PUD. So, if they're, if they're, if they do not meet the SF-7 standards, then they just, they establish a minimum lot size, setbacks, lot width. So that, the PUD gives them that flexibility to establish those standards.
Right, so, I mean, that's why we're here today, right? No PUD was presented in November, we didn't have an opportunity to voice our opinion. They already put the infrastructure in, which was told by staff to do it, and, I mean, what are we supposed to do whenever, you know, we don't have our opportunity back in November 2015, we can't go back to that, and now we're standing here saying, well, SF-7 doesn't actually count, so all the research you've done, all the facts you've come up with, they don't apply. Kind of how, when we started this whole endeavor, we, first thing we knew about was HOA, we knew our guidelines, we knew this, these homes didn't meet that square footage, and we found out the city can't do anything about that, perfectly fine, we took a different route, we went to the SF-7 zoning, brought that up. Part of the presentation I was going to show was variances. You know, part of the variances is showing that there's stuff that they don't meet, and you have to meet all five of those that are listed. Well, now I hear at the staff summary here at the beginning that the variances actually don't count either, so I'm kind of at a loss. We, we keep hitting roadblocks, and we take a different direction, and now we're basically being completely blocked again.
Okay, so, did you conclude your explanation of it, that an S, you have SF-7, but the PUD supersedes what was in the SF-7?
Correct, so, there's a difference, this is a variance process for an item that does not meet the code. Through the PUD, a variance is not required, we just prefer them, to them as modifications, those are allowed under the PUD standards. So, a variance is for, for example, if you have an existing home that's just on a single-family lot and they do not meet a setback, they would have to go through the Board of Adjustment, which is a completely different process than the process that we're going through today. So, these variance processes that are up on the screen, that's a, that's a different process that goes through the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. Do you understand that part of it?
Not completely, but I understand those are the rules, and we, we can't point to that then, so backup plan. If you want to go ahead and get to the layouts, then...
So basically...
Yeah, this, this won't help either, because this is all based on SF-7, so, right, go back. Okay, so we'll go, we'll start here, we'll skip all that.
Yeah.
You heard it in the Planning Commission, but we can't say it here, so I'll roll with it. So this is actually a quote from the developer to start the Planning Commission meeting that we just had Monday, and it says, "Back in 2015, the preliminary plat, which you guys approved," he's talking to the commission members, "this is the same layout that we've done, we've taken a lot out to try to accommodate the residents' request," and this is straight from the video, watched it today, had to rewind it, watch it, watch it, to type it out correctly, because the minutes were not on the website yet. So same lot sizes, same lot areas, basically it's the same thing that we had as 2015, or 2015, and if you can show the 2015 map. While they're getting it ready, I'll just point out then, the 2015 map that supposedly is the exact same as what we've seen January, February, now, only had four homes behind Greenbrier. And to go with that, there were... And to go with that, there were, again, this, this doesn't apply because it's SF-7, but I do want to point out how we keep being told this is the same, and it's not the same. Lots 100, 101, 102, 103, we're under those minimum square foot area for a lot.
I'm getting dizzy watching.
It should be, yeah. So, if you can see the top left corner, there's like a street going into a cul-de-sac. So, on the opposite side of that, there's, there's four lots right there that are under the standard. And then, the one to the right where you first pointed, I believe, is lot 100. So, four lots that didn't meet the minimum. And on the staff report, which of course, we went by, which doesn't seem to apply for this SF-7, it did say that they all met it, which unless it shows that there were four that actually didn't meet that. If we look at January's map, which you don't have to bring up, we don't need to see it, being the same, there's an additional five more lots on that same street that do not meet that minimum. So, we went from four, supposedly the exact same layout that we've all seen, and now, it's nine on that street that don't meet the minimal square foot area. And then, again, can you slide that map down to behind Greenbrier? So, this is what we would have seen if we had the public hearing. The layout was actually in the agenda, so I admit, planning commission, I called them out for not having it. It was there, so I went back and looked for it because I hate being wrong and found out I was wrong. So, I'll apologize for that. However, the original one had four houses behind Greenbrier. So, when we keep being told this is the same, it's obviously not the same. Things are changing. The reason I bring this up is because there's people that buy homes in the shores, Greenbrier, being told that this development is going to be the same as what's in the shores and what's in Greenbrier, what's in Lakeside. People have made their business, their life decisions, family decisions on buying homes knowing this is supposed to be the same, and it's obviously not the same. There's, there's a hard line. Even though SF-7 may not apply, there's a hard line right there that says all these homes are over it, all these new homes, not all, but 77, 74% of all of them are under that. It's not the same. So, that's what, this, this was going from November to January. You can see it went up to six. So, originally, we actually had four. Then, we went to six, and now, they're saying, you know, to help appease us, they took one out, whereas really, originally, it was four anyway. So, they still are one above that. And then, this, this was another item we didn't get in for the last hearing, our city council meeting, and it's the petition that we had. We went door-to-door in Greenbrier to get signatures. There are 17 signatures. At the time we did this, there were only 26 homes that people were living in. Several of the people had already signed online for a online petition, which had over 130 signatures. And each house that someone actually answered the door, they signed it, and they thanked us for doing this. Can I turn this in for the record or exhibit?
We'll enter this into the record as exhibit number four.
This, again, just points out some of the same things. This was November 9th, planning commission, the question was asked, you know, what, how many more lots? What's the layout? And there's your answer. It's the same size as basically as what we've seen in Greenbrier, shores, and Lakeside. Obviously, they are not the same. They're quite a bit different. And, you know, mentioning that there's some space in between, and they're wanting these setbacks. Well, my house has a 14 and a 15 side yard setbacks, and my neighbors are pretty similar, and I don't have, you know, substantially smaller house or a larger lot. I mean, it's, it's pretty close to what you see throughout there. So, instead of talking about a 10-foot gap, you're going to be seeing these 10-foot gaps when you look through 23 to 30-foot gaps between houses. And to go along with that, you know, when, when you have these 10-foot gaps, the fireplaces are built off the side of the home. Well, they're not part of the foundation, so they're not accounted in that. AC units, I went and measured the neighbors because their sticks out on the side, and it was three foot 10 inches. So, if two of those end up on the same side, which I've actually seen down in the shores, I mean, that's like, what, two feet, three feet that you're actually seeing between these air conditioning units? And that's very different from what they've already established in these three other subdivisions. That's all I got.
Any question?
Yeah, Your Honor. A matter of process. Will those slides be added to the public record as an exhibit as well or that he referred to? Because I don't think he read everything from the slides, but I wanted to know if those would be incorporated in the public record.
We certainly can if you want to make sure that we've got that available to us. And we'll enter that as exhibit five.
I'm doing a visual here. Now, with their proposal, unlet the three, lack of a better words, Greenbrier, the shores, and Lakeside and all those, those don't have real buffers separating those, right?
As far as.
There's not a buffer from Greenbrier to Lake Shore to Lakeside, right? The shores and Lakeside.
There is. I don't know if we have a full map.
I've driven over there a lot of times and just looking around. Now, this particular subdivision, I think what they're proposing is really a buffer between that and the other one that's got trails and trees and all that. So, it really, it almost gets, gives you a feel of a separate subdivision, doesn't it? If all this come to fruition. You have a street that will connect it, but there is a separation between that subdivision that's different from the other three.
The small one, the, actually, if you look, I was hoping for like an overall view of all of, yeah. So, you do see there's actually a pretty large division between what Lakeside has. They're on the far left, and they're basically completely cut off by an entire lake from the other two subdivisions. And then, yeah, the green space to the right of Greenbrier is, is bigger than what the green space is between the shores and Greenbrier, but there is a little bit there. And then, you can see if you follow the shores, though, it gets out to where there's nothing behind it. So, again, it's not letting up to anything, and there is a lot of green space for that.
Yeah, that's the point I wanted to make, that yes, part of the overall project or housing addition, but it's separated by a buffer that you typically don't have.
I'm not sure I agree, but I, I mean, I, I respect your opinion.
I mean, you're talking about a football field.
Right, right. My backyard's only 15-foot long, so a lot of times, I mean, we're in that green space, so it doesn't feel like it's that large when you're in it. I know, like you said, you've been there, so you'd see it that way. I would not see it that way, but that's fine.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Brady? Counselman Culpepper?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. The space that you're talking about between the back of your home and this strip of five homes that has the buffer. But as I recall seeing these, there is no buffer on the balance of this new subdivision with the homes to the north of them, correct?
Correct.
So, there's no buffer there at all? And that particular, yeah. I need a magnifying glass. The homes that are on the far northern end of that, those are 2,200 square foot minimums, as I recall, correct?
Yes, for two-story.
Yeah, and two-story. All right.
Which is compatible to the houses in the other subdivision, the other part of the subdivision?
Yes.
Gets confusing when we start talking about all these different units within the same.
Yes, I'm very used to talking numbers and not labeling them all with different names.
Okay. Anybody else saying, "Thank you, Ms. Brady"?
Thank you.
We have, we're going to call, am I missing one? Oh, those, oh, okay, here we go. What about Dr. Natalie Belch? First.
Can I speak from the overhead?
Yeah.
I have a question first, actually. One, or a response for the mayor. We wouldn't need a buffer if they followed the SF-7 guideline as we were told.
Yeah, but I think they've already explained that the PUD supersedes the SF-7. So, really, SF-7 is no longer an issue with this because you're talking about the PUD.
And yet, what I'm looking at here from 11-9-15, where it says the zoning of subject property is SF-7, it doesn't say SF-7RO? The red box in the middle?
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying that does not apply?
Ms. Wright, do you want to go over that again?
Well, what they are requesting is to establish those minimums. So, there still can be discussion on that, but there's still, what they're requesting to modify does meet the PUD standards. That makes sense.
So, it does not?
Yeah.
I need more clarification. Finally, have more clarification on that statement, please.
Sure. SF-7RO, as Ms. Wright mentioned, is the underlying zoning. I think what we're looking at here is from that old approval back in 2015. Again, planning commission approved a preliminary Platte last week that would supersede this. And before you this evening is the PUD concept plan. As Ms. Wright mentioned, the, the basic standards in terms of lot width, lot size, and setbacks are certainly part of the discussion, but they're what applicant is proposing and Ms. Wright showed earlier in terms of the, the basics. It's certainly valid to discuss how they may differ or align with SF-7 zoning standards since that was the original base zoning at one point. And again, that's, that's certainly a point of discussion as it would be with any other zoning category that anybody would want to compare it to. But staff is just simply presenting it as what was presented by the applicant to establish those minimums here as part of the PUD.
And that was just switched on us last week, the RO.
The RO has been in place, I believe, since 2004. What's shown here is granted not accurate from what was submitted back in 2015. But again, we're looking at a new application and new procedure and proposal here this evening.
And I guess I, I keep coming back to the 11-9-15 because I think procedure wasn't followed, and at every turn, Summit was making representations to the planning commission where your decision or your approval was based on what they were. They stated repeatedly that they were meeting SF-7.
Yeah, can you speak up a little bit? I get the microphone. Something, you can't, I can't hear you totally. Okay.
I am suggesting that Summit repeatedly acknowledged and assured the planning commission in writing and under oath that they were meeting SF-7 guidelines. And today, it appears they are not, and they're calling it SF-7RO. And I feel like that should be addressed.
I mean, I can't answer. Is there any further comments staff want to make on it? Is that, is we're going to agree to disagree or what?
I'm not sure what else to add either, Your Honor, other than the fact, again, the underlying zoning has been again since 2004 SF-7/RO, and the standards for PUD are what we're, we're moving forward with here tonight. Again, as Mr. Wright, I think, clarified earlier in his presentation, that the 2015 approval was not without errors, as Dr. Belkins is also pointing out here as well. So, that's why we are going through a renewed process, which is why we are here tonight.
Okay. So, until the PUD is approved tonight, the amended PUD, does the old PUD stand, the 2004 one with the 83 lots?
Your Honor, the applicant is requesting to amend the 2004 PUD concept plan. Again, the, the primary purpose for that is to allow for the additional density over the allowable 2% kind of flex or threshold there, and that's what they're proposing here tonight. And again, along with that, formally establishing those setbacks, lot widths, and lot sizes as allowed by the PUD standards.
Okay. Think I understand it better now.
I have a question about what staff said. You mentioned the PUD standard on change is 2%. And I think that that's a point that needs to be brought out. It's in the staff report that it's 2.69%, but if you were to do the math and say, "We're adding 21 lots," and the original was 83 lots, you'd say, "Well, that's a 20, that's over 20% change." Okay? 21 lots versus 83, that's, that's, a 2% change would be, 2% of 83 would be less than two lots. So, there is, I guess, the number that it looks like it counts to is 792 units or 792 residences is being used as, as the denominator instead of the 83. And that, to me, is more than the three subdivisions combined in the number of houses there. You're talking much bigger than the houses that are currently built, the number of houses.
The PUD standards specifically state that the increase in density is based on the entire concept plan, which doesn't include the entire Chapman Farms master plan.
So, and, and that change now is at 2.69, which is above the 2%. But that's, so all of the changes within the whole Chapman Farms has now been located into this one 33-acre parcel. So, it's.
Yeah, I'll let Ms. [inaudible].
At least 2.69% of them. Yes.
Right. The additional, Your Honor, the additional density that's being requested is simply within this, this project.
Correct.
I don't have any other reference in terms of additional density. I believe staff did go through that exercise some time ago to look at where other densities have been modified throughout, throughout the years here with Chapman Farms. And it has happened in certain circumstances in certain projects. This is the latest one to go through that. I'm not sure if it's the largest, I guess, increase or diversion from the original plan.
Well, if it's 2% the limit, then there shouldn't have been any others because this is 2.69. That would seem to consume all of the 2% variance within the whole product, the whole PUD.
I see what you're saying in terms of, yes, there may, others did not exceed the 2% threshold. There may have been increases in density or changes in density in other subdivisions within Chapman Farms, but they did not exceed the 2%. I guess that's, that, that would be correct.
I have a quick question as to follow up on that. How much land is left in the entire master plan after this project? Essentially, I'm getting at, is there, is there a chance that more density could be requested to be developed in relation to the entire master plan if there's more land available to be developed down the road?
Your Honor, staff did go through that exercise to determine additional possibilities for expansion of, of density. It's, it's certainly possible, thinking of the estates, Chapman Farms, the west side of 7th Highway, just north of Colburn Road. Only the first few Platts have been finalized there.
And that all falls in the master plan.
Right. And there's also some vacant property between the estates and 7th Highway that is not yet developed. So, there's opportunity there perhaps.
Okay.
But again, I can certainly defer to my colleague here to my left in terms of limitations of the NID. Standard sewer is going to be a real limiting factor there as well. And that was the part of the limiting factor here before you this evening.
Thank you.
Good question.
Your Honor?
Your Honor? I just want clarification, if I may, Ms. Allen. So what I understand you to say is that this percentage is using the entire Chapman Farms development. However, then each smaller portion or each subdivision, if you will, is standalone to calculate that percentage?
I may defer to Mr. Wright again in terms of how we came up with the calculation. I love the fact that the code does make the distinction that you base the calculation on like zoning. So we do go back to the base zoning category in terms of just the distinction there to make that calculation. Mr. Wright, if that's correct, but...
Yeah, that's how it's based there. I can pull up the...
So I guess really, while he's doing that, my question really is, is it accumulative or is it specific to each individual subdivision? Or is it cumulative throughout the entire Chapman Farms, that percentage?
We base it on, Your Honor, Councilman, we base it on the latest approved PUD concept plan. In this case, the last revision is 2007. So we don't necessarily go back to position zero back in 2004. We go back to the last approved PUD concept plan as these become amended. So that's where we base... That's the baseline number. But again, in this case, it's not all residential because there is some multifamily in Chapman Farms. It's not the entire Chapman Farms project since there's some commercial as well. It's simply what similarly zoned property, so what other SF-7/RO, but other property like that sets our baseline, and we base our calculations on that. So the 2.69% is an increase of the entire, as shown on, as Mr. Wright has up there, 2.69% increase from the original 771 units and now being proposed at 792 units. And that is an increase of 2.69%. But again, the overall density is still 2.213 is presented from the 2.15 units per acre. So overall density is still, you know, essentially less than a tenth of a unit per acre increase. But again, but yes, that's the overall SF-7 zoned property.
So to follow up on Mr. Fowler's comment, that it appears that the biggest majority of these, of the allowance, the percentage allowance for variance is all getting shoved into a very small portion of the development of the entire Chapman Farms, which happens to be this particular item.
I am thinking, Your Honor and Councilman, I think I'm also referring... It sounds like there's some reference to percentages of deviations or modifications. Is that maybe the percentage we're talking about as well? The 77% of the lots are being modified from or have differentiation from the underlying base zoning? Is that part of what you're getting at? Or you're saying the overall increase in density is occurring in this project? And that is true because that's the only part of the project we're referring to tonight. And I don't have a reference point for other projects that have increased density because they have not increased it over the 2% that would require a public hearing and this process.
Okay, well, that's really where I'm going here.
Sure.
So you're saying that other areas of the development haven't reached that percentage threshold. So the percentage threshold is based on the entire number of units, in this case, 792 units. But it's only individually calculated per subdivision. And I'm saying that subdivision within Chapman Farms. So your calculation is based on this particular piece of property, but your underlying calculation is using the all of Chapman Farms?
Yeah, that is currently zoned as SF-7, has the SF-7 underlying zoning. Again, if the applicant or somebody were to come in and modify Ridgewood Place, Lakeside, the shores, Greenbrier, all of those together, then yes, the number would be bigger and therefore the increase in density would be less.
So you would... If you had another piece of property come into this, into Chapman Farms, and they had the same amount of variances, they wouldn't be allowed because this subdivision used up all that percentage? Or is it then they start over again with the calculation? And that's where I'm going?
Yes, the latter, correct. That is correct, yes. So that, going back to what I was saying earlier, the last time we had any, you know, public process approval through the PUD concept plan was 2007. So we're talking 10 years of no changes to the PUD concept plan until tonight. And so that's why this is basing their increase in density on the 2007. So yes, should someone come in, as I mentioned, Councilman, let's say, the vacant property between the estates and 7 Highway, whoever owns that, buys that, wants to develop that, wants to increase density, their new baseline will be... Would be based on whatever is presented here tonight should it be approved.
Yeah.
So yes, that number would increase.
Okay, I don't want to belabor it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, back to you, Dr. Belkin. You want to continue with your presentation?
I was going to ask if we could put up the... The computer seems to be doing something. The 2007 PUD of Briar Valley. Does the overhead still work? I'll skip ahead. of which all of them meet the SF-7 guidelines. I know you're telling me now that's moot, but through the whole process, everywhere, it was promised that SF-7 was going to be met. It's on every form, it's on all the applications. There's such a sharp contrast. Sorry about my orange highlighter, but here again was my second point. Summit acknowledged that SF-7 applies. It states the preliminary plat meets the minimum lot size, minimum lot setbacks under SF-7. And now we're calling it SF-7 RO, but I'm... Back in the day, when this preliminary plat was approved, they promised it was going to meet the SF-7 guidelines.
What's the date on this?
11-9-15.
Okay, it's 11-9-15 still, okay.
Third point, the Planning Commission approved the preliminary plat back in 2015, which Summit has based its infrastructure on allegedly. The approval was based on the representations of Summit. Even so, the approval was made with the city specifically not waiving any requirement or development standard contained in the UDC. The code must be followed. I don't know if you can read that. It says, "Approval by the Planning Commission based on the representations of any drawings presented as part of this application does not waive any requirement or development standard contained in the UDC." So I find it interesting that we're having this discussion today. On the preliminary plat, the lot layout, dimensions, lot areas, easements, building lines, and lot and block numbers were all to be included, and they were not. Zoning status of property was also supposed to be included. This information was not included, as you can see on the map. You'll notice I tried to highlight where stuff was checked off. And during the Planning Commission meeting, for example, Commissioner Phillips asked when we were going to get the lot layout and dimensions of this Lot 10 property. And the answer, I think, Mr. Allen provided was that that would be on down the road. That's what was on their application. In the end, the city Planning Commission and city staff noted that Summit would have to replat the land to comply with the already approved plat. The already approved plat was to comply with SF-7 and was to only have 83 lots. I'm going to show you the difference of what we're talking about and how I think myself and many of the neighbors are not crazy. the 104 lots, and the one on the right shows 83. All of them, again, met SF-7 guidelines, and we wouldn't even be having this conversation if their new PUD application had met the guidelines. I think I also want to emphasize that through the research that we've done, the city has not failed Summit. I think the city is not at risk. The system has not failed Summit. Summit failed to live up to the SF-7 requirements, which it knew about and represented many times throughout the process. I think it's interesting now that since last week, we're throwing the RO on there, SF-7 RO, when that was never discussed on any of these other applications. And finally, I'll conclude. The blank space on the left was what was submitted, 11-9-15, and it has none of the required measurements, setbacks, lot sizes. It does not meet the zoning information that was required at that time. To say, "Oh, that was a mistake or an oversight," I don't know that that's good enough for our neighbors and our home values. The one on the right is what it should look like. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman.
Was this witness sworn in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I must have missed that. Sorry.
It was over at the other podium.
Yes, she changed which.
And well, the same question, will all of these slides that were referenced here, again, if you're not watching the video, are they going to be made part of the public record?
Can you provide that so they can make it part of the record?
Oh, I sure can.
Okay.
They will be entered as exhibit number six.
All right. No other questions, Dr. Belkin? Okay, thank you. Last one I have is another Jason. We have Jason Montgomery.
Your Honor?
Something we ask you, don't repeat what's already been said.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Counsel, support everything Dr. Belkins has said here. I sent my email in on record in opposition to the project. And I just want to go back to, and this is the exact document I was going to ask to display for everyone, is the 21 units, where Summit is shoving those 21 units into a very small area, although they are calculating that out from a very large area to get a small percentage. But we're just getting those extra 21 houses right next to us instead of spread out over the whole master plan. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Montgomery? Seeing none, thank you. I don't have any other forms, but does anyone else like to speak in opposition too?
I will.
Yeah, I'm going to need you to fill out one of those forms when you get done.
Okay.
And please don't repeat things already been said because we've been into this public hearing for a while.
I do swear. My name is Larry Jones, 27309 Mason School Road. I realize that people in Greenbrier are concerned about those four or six houses that are going to be along where the pool's at. I live across the street in about a $550,000 home and been there 30 years. And I'm really more concerned about the 1,400-square-foot homes that are going to face Mason School Road. And, you know, it's going to... Certainly going to drive down my property value having 1,400-square-foot homes there. And then my second part of why I'm here is there's another large plot of land to the east of where we've been concentrating all night. And I had heard, could be mistaken, I had heard that those were going to be multifamily. Now, to get back to what Ms. Culpepper said, if that gets addressed down the road, will that meet a totally different density requirement? Or will they have to qualify that on a stand on its own? Or is that where part of this number is being spread out to?
Staff?
Because it's all part of Chapman Farms.
Is that part of the overlay, the other property you're talking about?
Yeah, can you...
To the east of...
Just to the east.
Can you bring up the aerial photo?
Yep.
Thanks. It's page 60.
It's page 64.
So where you are on Mason School Road, is that near City and the county?
I'm not sure.
Are you in the city or the county?
I'm not sure, sir.
Oh, you're not sure?
No. I mean, I'm on the south side of Mason School Road.
You're in the county.
Okay.
And are you referring to the property directly to the east of this development?
Yes.
Okay. That all is under one ownership, and it's his own county agriculture?
There we go, thank you.
And we have not received any plans, and that is not a part of the Chapman Farms PUD.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Would you fill out one of those forms, go and get it back to us? Thank you. Okay, I don't have anyone else. Okay, make it quick. And fill out a form when you're done, because we didn't get one on you.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Thank you. Your honor, councilman, thank you. My name's, yep, my name's Thomas DeLonge, 8825 Southwest 4th Street. I've looked at this subdivision, I was in the military for 21 years, I've always wanted something better for my family. And I saw this neighborhood in about 2010 for the first time. And I looked at it, and the lots are beautiful, the homes are beautiful, and it was way out of my price range. I know they've talked about, oh, by putting these smaller homes will be a more diverse neighborhood. We have retirees in the neighborhood already. We have some of the home setters, or the empty nesters, we have them already. We don't need to keep downsizing the homes in order to bring in diversity. It took me several years to get to where I am, and it was a lot of hard work and a lot of the sacrifices I had to make to get into a neighborhood that was this nice, this spread out, and not be crammed in next to each other. I've been in California, I've been in places where you can jump from house to house. That's not what I wanted for my family, and that's what this neighborhood gave us. I think it gave everybody in the neighborhood that feel that you have your own space. By keep increasing the density, it's just going to bring everything tighter and tighter. When we move south of Mason School Road with the rest of the neighborhood that's going on there, they're going to keep cramming as much as they can. So I would respectfully request that we keep this back to the 83 lots that it was originally intended for.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone? Okay, come on.
I do have a form ready. I do. And I'm Brittany Boswell. I just want to make a few quick points. We were talking about the buffer earlier, and Councilwoman Culpepper brought up the 2,200 square foot homes that are going to be up north. Those, even if they're 2,200 square feet, they're not necessarily going to be comparable to the homes that we have right now, but when the setbacks are different, and when you're looking out, like Jason brought up, the different widths in between the homes. So I wanted to make sure that was on record. I don't really see there being any kind of buffer in between any of the subdivisions that we have, and we're all considered one group anyway, even with the lakes separating us. I live in Lakeside, so I don't feel like there's a buffer between me and Greenbrier either. The other thing is, when we're talking about SF7 RO and PUD is not having any kind of minimums, that means we have to start with some kind of baseline, right? So isn't SF7 still our baseline? Isn't that what we should go to first? And shouldn't there be some good reason for varying from that, even if you don't have to follow those five criteria for variances? I feel like we need to have some good faith basis for modifying this. And I don't see that Summit's given you any reason to modify that, other than their infrastructure's already in the ground, based on their representation, that SF7 would be met for all of these years. I mean, SF7 RO, this is the first time we've heard of that, and that they didn't have to comply with SF7 since we've been involved, and that's only since January of this year. You know, so we've been doing this from 2004, 2015 on, and this is the first time that's been brought up. So I think your default and what we as constituents would like you to do is use SF7 as the baseline until you have a good reason not to. And as far as diversity goes within the subdivision, I'm a young professional, single, and I live in Lakeside, so I think we do have the diversity, and I don't think we need to build 1,400 square foot homes in order to allow people to, you know, move into our area and get diversity. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, now I'm getting ready to hit the gal. Anyone else? Close this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to introduce? Bill 4489. Anyone like to introduce it? Seeing? Seeing none?
I'll introduce it, your honor.
Okay. Councilman Carter.
First reading. First reading of bill number 4489, in ordinance approving an amendment to the Ridgewood Place, that Chapman Farms lots 1 through 104, and tracks A through G planned unit development.
I'll move the be approved on first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Councilman Fowler.
I defer to you.
Okay. Yes, your honor, thank you. I think there's a lot of respect for all people on all sides of this issue. It's been a very long time coming, many public hearings. To suggest that there's not confusion in our process would be, you know, an understatement. I think that whether you're on the developer's side, the citizen's side, or even the city's side, there has been mistakes along the way. As a city councilman, I certainly apologize to all those involved, because this has highlighted some of the things we need to go fix. I can see the, well, first I want to say thank you to Councilman Culpepper, she's in the district. She, I had a tragedy that happened at Lake City and had to stay on work in most of my time, I couldn't meet with the developer when they requested. I was able to meet with the citizens, but it was like on the weekends, that kind of stuff. So I thank Councilman Culpepper for getting involved with this and bringing it to the state that it's at currently. Whether it's voted up or down, I think that, I do appreciate all that extra effort. So I guess for the, from 2004, when the final plat was approved, to 2015, anybody that would have done their due diligence buying in that area, they may have looked at what was approved and on record, and that was the 83 lots. That was the last thing submitted. And without having a research degree and understanding what all went into this, because we certainly spent many meetings trying to go into the details and the interpretations of what all that means, I can see where somebody, if they bought, you know, based on that, then they would expect it to be that. There is a lot of opportunity for improvement, I guess I should say. So the, and I, again, I respect what the developers has done on this, I know that they have, I believe, worked hard to comply with all of our requests, and I think they can see some of the confusion as well.
Councilman Carter.
Your honor, I echo everything that Councilman Fowler just said with respect to all sides involved in this, and I'm embarrassed, on behalf of the city, from my role as a city councilman. I go back to the original purchase agreement, when Summit bought the land from the land bank, it was 105 lots, I believe, and then somehow we got it whittled down to 83, now we're back to 104. There have been a lot of changes to this, there have been a lot of compromises made, a lot of good faith effort, and I respect the citizens who've put forth all of these arguments. But in the end, there's no good outcome here. Somebody's going to lose, and that's sad for our process.
Councilman Culpepper?
Thank you, your honor. I've spent a lot of time both with Summit Homes and with the residents. We've worked really hard, and I really respect all the time and the due diligence done. The residents have certainly done their homework and certainly have dug and dug and dug to find answers to their questions, and I really appreciate that. I mean, I'm sitting up here, I've been through all these negotiations and worked hard to get where we are today, and I'm still conflicted. I think it's unfortunate that we are finding flaws in the way we do things at such a poor time for the development of this subdivision. So I will leave it at that. I want to thank all of the residents for all their time and all their hard work put into this, and also the representatives of Summit Homes that have spent time and hours with me poring over big colored, where I've taken my highlighter and scribbled all over. And I do appreciate that also. So that being said, I'm sitting here, I'm wanting the best for the city, I'm wanting the best for our residents.
Anyone else, Councilman Levise?
I would also like to disclose, I've met also with Summit Homes and with some of the residents, and had discussions on both sides. I think, I acknowledge what Councilman Fowler has said, obviously, we have done a lot in the years I've been on this council to improve our relationship with the developers and development community, and that's borne out by our surveys, that we've done drastic changes and significant improvement, and obviously, we have some room to continue to do that. I'm sympathetic to what Summit Custom has done, and I think, as somebody said, I think there's been a good faith effort to follow our process, and I would say, you know, maybe there's just some review that needs to be done, and some things that are probably already in the works. But I think I lean more on, regardless of which application you're talking about here, whether it's the 2015 or this newest one, the residents continue to have a problem of whichever application you're talking about. And even if you, we started from scratch and we're back at zero, and now we have this preliminary plat with the PUD concept plan, and the residents are saying that PUD concept plan is not acceptable. And so I think Councilman Culpepper and Councilman Fowler, you guys have done a lot to try to find a compromise, and there's been concessions made by Summit Custom. But I feel like, on some levels, when you look at the changes over the plans, the concessions that have been made have been more on the edges, and there seems to be a resistance to do any sort of wholesale changes that's going to impact Summit's bottom line. And from a business standpoint, I don't blame you at all, I think that's absolutely what you should be doing as a business, but our constituents are the residents, and I just want to say, regardless of the outcome, we want Summit Custom Homes to be involved in this community. We want you investing millions of dollars and continuing to build, and it's unfortunate that this is where we are. But ultimately, our representation is of the residents, and I don't think we can turn a blind eye to a petition of 120 residents. From my perspective, from my high level, you guys have been a great corporate citizen in Blue Springs, we've built the dream homes here, you guys are involved in the community, we got your guys involved in the chamber, so from my council perspective, I have to say, you've done a great job being involved in this community. But obviously, there is some issue on the client level, and I don't know what that is, because I'm not one of your clients, that needs to be addressed. And so I would encourage you, I don't know that it's our job or our responsibility to try to find a compromise or to suggest changes to this plan, except to say, this one doesn't seem to be acceptable. And so it's going to be incumbent on you guys and the residents to find a compromise and come to us and say, this is what that looks like. And that would be my position at this point, as I'm working through all this myself.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Looked like the motion failed. All right, so we'll move on to item number 10, and 11 has been withdrawn. 10 and 11 has been withdrawn. We'll go to item number 12, introduction and reading of bill 4491.
I'll introduce you, your honor.
Okay.
Mayor, that is actually bill number 4490, there was a change on that, I apologize.
You changed the number to 90?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's 4490.
4490.
First reading of bill number 4490, in ordinance approving final plat for Colonial Highlands first plat.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.
Second reading of bill number 4490, in ordinance approving final plat for Colonial Highlands first plat.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4659.
Next we need a so moved on adoption of resolution 32-2017.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Next we move to introduction of bill number 44?
91.
91.
I'll introduce you, your honor.
All right.
First reading of bill number 4491, in ordinance approving final plat for Triangle Outer Road.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4491, in ordinance approving final plat for Triangle Outer Road.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4660.
Next we have introduction and reading of bill number 4491.
I'll introduce you, your honor.
First reading of bill number 4492.
Are we down to two?
Yes, I'm sorry, 4492.
Down to two, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. An ordinance approving contract for services as city prosecutor with Vernon Scoville III.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4492, in ordinance approving a contract for services as city prosecutor with Vernon Scoville III.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given the ordinance number 4662.
Next we have a presentation on Scentech, Chris Sendy.
Good evening, mayor and council. Might I ask the question, if anyone needs to take a break before we start our presentation?
As long as it's a quick one, we don't.
It's probably going to be about 15 minutes.
Can anybody take a break? Matt, let's move on.
Okay, very good. Well, with that, in June of 2016, the council authorized us to enlist the assistance of a consultant to do a surface analysis of the street system in the city of Blue Springs. And during that time, we have worked with a company named Stantech to perform that analysis. And I actually have with us this evening Fred Stevenson from Stantech, who's going to give you an overview of the process they went through to provide the information to us, and at the backside, then I will talk about where we're headed from here. Fred, if you'd like to come on up.
You don't have to be sworn in to do it.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris. It's a pleasure to be here. Again, my name's Fred Stevenson, I'm the senior project manager with Stantech Consulting. So today, I'm here to talk about the pavement management analysis that we did with Chris and the folks over at Public Works, summer of last year into the fall, and we're just kind of wrapping things up right now. So I want to kind of talk about high levels, sort of what your pavement management reality is out there. Obviously, roads make up a large portion of any city's infrastructure, and thus, it takes a lot of capital and a lot of operating expenditures to maintain that asset. You have approximately $750 million of money tied up, if you will, in your roads, so that's quite a bit of assets you have out there, and it's going to take some money to maintain them, otherwise, you've got to replace all of those roads at some point in time. Pavements will continue to deteriorate due to various factors, deficiencies in construction materials and practices, you may have a bad contractor out there, and that doesn't help. Environmental and climatic conditions, so heavy storms soak the roadbed and make the roads worse. Environmental, you have situations with freeze thaw cycles here that really put a big stress on your roads, which makes them deteriorate quite quickly. Growth increases the traffic. You'll find that, excuse me, you'll find that garbage- You'll find that, excuse me, you'll find that garbage trucks, buses, those types of vehicles put a heavy loading on your roads and quickly deteriorate them. And obviously, if we don't have enough money to fund it, your roads are gonna deteriorate. So the project that we did with Public Works was to answer some of these, or to go after these key objectives. So what do we have out there? What condition is it in? What work needs to be done on the roads? Give me some idea of what the costs are going to be to fix the roads, and then need to come up with some pavement management recommendations based on, based on findings. So what do we have? You currently have 485 driven lane miles, that you might have heard some other reference to lane miles, which is closer to 600, but the way that we do it is how many driving lanes you have out there, that's an equivalent to a lane mile. We did an assessment on those, on parking lots, and 10 miles of hard surface trails. The assessment was done with, through an automated approach, I don't know if any of you were able to see the van while it was here. This is our RT 3000 unit, the front bumper has lasers, which measures the longitudinal profile of the road, which is basically the smoothness. Out the back, we have downward high-speed cameras, laser illumination, so we can get a nice picture of the pavement, so we can do our evaluation. And then on top, we had a 360 camera that, kind of like Google Images, so we got a full 360-degree view of your street right away as we drove it. And we do this automated data collection because it's more objective, it's more accurate, it's more repeatable, and obviously, since we're driving the roads, it's more cost-effective. So the evaluation is done using a standard, and the standard in the industry is ASTMD6433. And what that standard does is defines what the different types of pavement defects are out there, and how we classify them, how we rate them, how we measure them. So for the ASTM distresses, you've got like 19 distresses for all your asphalt roads and 19 distresses for all your concrete roads, so it's a very in-depth analysis that's going So we take that high-resolution imagery that I was talking about off the back end of the vehicle, and we actually physically measure the cracks and put circles and squares around alligator cracking and things like that. So we're doing a detailed review continuously along your roadways. So our raiders will take a look at the different types of cracking and identify how severe it is, and measure the density, or measure the density of how much is out there. All of that data then went into the Road Matrix Pavement Management System, which we're implementing with Public Works. First of all, it provides a street network inventory, so we've developed a database based on a block-to-block network definition. The system will allow past, present, and future condition analysis of the roadways. It'll help do some maintenance rehabilitation analysis too, based on the condition results. And we can run funding scenarios against those results, so we can say, what if I have 300, 3 million, 4 million, 5 million a year, what will be the impact on my network? And we can also set service target levels, so say I want to maintain my network at a certain level, how much money is it that we're going to need to meet those targets? The system also provides some tools for Public Works to develop cost-effective maintenance rehabilitation programs, they can store all the work history that gets done on their roads, and then obviously, they can report out the results and develop maps to help them with their work and getting information out to council and to the public. So once all the data's collected, it creates these performance indicators. So I was talking about the longitudinal profile, that's basically the smoothness or the ride comfort on the roadway, and we can measure that on a scale of 0 to 100. The PCI, which is the industry standard, again, it's on a scale of 0 to 100, and it's, again, it's the measure of the pavement distresses that are on the road. Some distresses, such as alligator and edge cracking and rutting, those are common when you have load associated problems, and the roads are gonna deteriorate quickly, so they have a big impact on your PCI score. And then the PQI, the overall pavement quality index, is a combination of those, of those two, and we can use that PQI to help us determine what type of treatments are required on our streets. Well, 0 to 100 is kind of hard to kind of wrap your head around, so we can kind of put that into some descriptive terminology, from good all the way down through fair, we can set PQI ranges that fit within those, and the same from a level of service category, you know, if I'm at a certain value, it's inadequate, if not, it's unsatisfactory. But again, even having those descriptions, you kind of want to know what, you know, what does a good PQI look like? So for example, PQI in the range of 86 to 100 is considered excellent, so there's an example there with Northwest Castle Drive, pretty much a brand-new road, no cracking whatsoever. A fair PQI is Northeast 23rd Street, you're starting to see some slight cracking show up, maybe some moderate every once in a while, and when you get down into poor, as on Southwest Emerald Creek Place, extensive cracking, the cracks are starting to get severe, you're starting to see a lot of load-associated cracking. That road is going to deteriorate quickly and potentially fail in the near future. So the results showed that the average PQI, which is that overall condition index of your road network, is a 59.5, so that falls within the fair category. From the distribution perspective, you do have a lot of roads that fall within the poor, the 41 to 55, but it is offset by the 250 lane miles, if you will, of roads in the fair to the excellent condition. So just looking at a map, if we color-code the map based on those PQIs, it's kind of hard to see here, but anything that's red, orange, yellow, those are the roads that are way down in the PQI range, roads in the green to blue, those are the good ones. So you can kind of see in and around the city where, you know, maybe some of your older roads, they typically show up in the lower end of the PQI range. So so far, we've covered off, you know, what do we have and what condition is it in. What I want to do now is just sort of talk about, you know, what needs to be done on the roads, what's the cost, and see if there's some recommendations that we could conclude from, from the results. So a road will deteriorate over time, and starting off at a perfect score of, say, 100 when it's first built, you typically have about 20, 20 points on the PQI range, go in and either do nothing, or just do some, you know, minor crack seal and or pothole repair, some minor maintenance. Between an 80 and a 60, this is where you're gonna get into these pavement preservation techniques or surface treatments, and basically, those are just thin applications on your roads to keep them sealed up, keep the water from entering into, into the subgrade and into the base material. Between a 60 and a 40, this is where you're gonna go in and mill off the pavement and put a brand-new layer of asphalt down. Anything below 40, you're typically looking at a reconstruct or a full remove and replace of the asphalt. Unfortunately, that's very, very expensive, and typically, what happens is you just go in and do some stopgap measures, including doing some patching here and there, just trying to keep the road safe. So we can take that approach and put that into the pavement management software, and we do that through the use of the decision trees. So we just set up some simple PQI ranges for, for different functional classes and pavement types, and we're able to identify suitable treatments based on those PQI scores. So we ran an analysis over a 10-year period and found, based on the scores today and what they would predict it to be over the next 10 years, you have approximately $82 million worth of feasible work that's out there on your network right now that could be done. So we have our needs, now we can do some sort of budget scenarios against it, because obviously, we don't have $82 million to spend. So we could run some scenarios and compare them to one another, so we ran seven, at least seven scenarios, these are just some of them, which included a do-nothing scenario, so if we had no money, what would be the impact on our network? Ran our current, your current budget of $2.3 million per year, increased it by $500,000 just to see what the impact would be. We set some service target levels at 60, which is basically maintain where we are today, and what if we wanted to get to a 70? We also ran a best practices analysis, and I'll get into that a little bit, a little bit later, and then we also ran a 5 million, 6 million budget, which is basically taking the needs and trying to level out the funding over a 10-year, 10-year period. So this graph shows some of those budget analysis results that we did. So the black graph is basically, if you had all the money in the world, you could maintain your network pretty much at a, at a 90, and again, that would come out to about $82 million worth of work. The orange line, the do-nothing budget, you don't spend a thing, and you can see that your network average would fall from your PQI was at 59.5 in 2016, it's predicted to fall way down to a 31 by 2026 if you did absolutely nothing on your roads. The, the two gray lines there, those are the maintained, the PQIs at certain levels, so you can see if I want to maintain it at a 60, you would need about $52.9 million, might be a little bit hard to see in the table below. If you want to maintain it at a 70, oh, sorry, if you want to maintain it at a 70 to a $52.9, if you want to maintain it currently, you'd need approximately $32.4 million over the next 10 years. And the red line, again, that's the best practices, and that's looking at taking a different philosophy in terms of how it is that you do your work going, going forward. So this is the concept of best practices. A road will, the red line, the first, the first curve there, the road will deteriorate over time, and it's much more cost-effective to keep applying these surface treatment strategies to the road, as opposed to just letting the road deteriorate before you have to go on and either mill and overlay it, or totally reconstruct it. If you keep doing a cycle of surface treatments, typically three or four surface treatments every three years, and then come in with a mill and overlay, you can extend the life of the pavement, and you can do it at a fraction of the cost of just letting the road deteriorate and then reconstruction. The cost of a reconstruction is 10 times the amount of a surface treatment. So in summary, Blue Springs Road Network is currently considered in fair condition with a PQI of 59.5. We've done lots of other agencies in the area, and they tend to fall between 53 and 64, so you're kind of on the higher end in, in relationship to some of the other agencies in the area. Again, it's estimated about $82 million worth of needs are actually out there on your roads over the next 10 years, so your current funding level of 2.3 million is obviously insufficient to address all those needs. So there's two pavement management strategies that are typically done. The first one is a worst-first approach, which is a very reactive approach and not highly recommended. Obviously, as we've talked about with the best practices, is you wait too long to, and only address the roads that are in poor condition, it's gonna cost you a lot of money, and you're not gonna be able to fix too many roads. Whereas if you take the pavement preservation or more proactive approach to maintaining your network, again, doing the crack seals, the surface treatments on, on cycles prior to doing a mill and overlay, you want to work on roads that are in fair to the good category as much as you can. Obviously, you have to offset that with roads that are in bad condition and, and, you know, safety and those types of things. But if you do the more proactive approach, you're gonna be able to address more roads for the same dollars. So with that, I'll end it back over. Thank you, Fred.
Well, I hope you found Fred's information informative. Now that we've kind of learned about what we have, and Standtec's take on what we can do for our roads, I think it's time to talk about where we go from here. First thing I was gonna talk about is that I believe there is support that we will be deferring the overlay program in the 2018 budget year to construct Northeast Toronto Drive, so when you look in the tables in the book, please, if that's the case, move those out one more year in the cycle. We anticipate in 2018-19 that we are going to start, instead of the street rehabilitation program, we will do the pavement management program. In the CIP, we are proposing to increase the amount of funding for this program by $500,000 to put us at 2.8 million. Since we've taken the time and we've done the study, we tend to do, we expect to predict, we expect to select the streets by the PQI or the PCI for the lesser-traveled roads. The PQI is more applicable to the thoroughfares and arterials in the city, whereas the PCI is more, more representative of cul-de-sacs and streets that don't have high volumes and higher speeds. We also propose that, from this point forward, we will work on all streets based on their PQI/PCI score, as opposed to doing them evenly across the council districts, we will work on the roads that actually meet the guidelines, and if that happens to be that we do more in District 2 one year than District 3, it'll even out in the end. We hope there's support for that. When you, as we move through the, my part of this presentation, you'll notice that some of my numbers are a little bit different than what Fred demonstrated, and that's because what Fred provided for us was a snapshot in time of what the roads look like summer 2016. Some of them are gonna deteriorate a faster rate, some of them at a slower rate. So each year, we will have a block to work from, and on those, we will also go out and do visual inspection to ensure that those match what we should be doing. Some will move up, some will move down. And then, as was shown in the earlier slide, there are many different types of asphalt deterioration to deal with, and we will be selecting our treatments also based on what kind of deterioration we have on roads. This is the program parameter for, I changed my numbers a little bit from Fred's. As you might have noticed, his bottom number was a 40, and my number actually goes down to a 20 for a total reconstruction stopgap measure. This year, we worked on Jefferson Street, we had initially thought that we would go out and we would do some deep base patching and just put an overlay on. After taking a final look at it before we actually did the work, and we made it through winter, we decided that we'd be better served to actually mill five inches off of the road, replace those five with base material, and then put another three inches of surface asphalt on top of it, to make it a substantial road that will last for many years. So those are field judgment calls that we make when we look at the road of the last, you know, last 30 days before we actually get into the process. Some roads, we can do the stopgap measure where there's six or eight bad spots on the road, where we're gonna tear those out, we're gonna replace those, and then we're gonna put a mill and overlay over it. Or maybe the rest of the road is in such a condition that we do some deep base patching and then put a surface treatment upon it. So as you kind of go through there, there's, you know, 50 and 70, we do a surface treatment with patching, 16 and 80, we just do a surface treatment, 80 and 90, we do a crack seal, which we do do in-house, we have a crew that does that, and that's kind of the program we've got set forth at this point. In 2019, we've got the snapshot from 2016, 2019, we expect to bring Standtec or another company back to do another snapshot and a rating system to compare with what numbers we had in 2016 are one, to tell us how much we've hopefully gained on the streets that we've done maintenance to, and what our actual deterioration has been on the rest of the system. So we can basically kind of set as a trend line moving forward, and the idea would be to do this about every three years following. Projected cost at this time is it's gonna cost us about $60,000 to do that out of the STO6 budget, to keep our program alive and viable. The surface treatments that we are selecting or we're considering, generally, a surface treatment is 3/8 of an inch to an inch thick. It's designed to seal the pavement, to keep the water out, it provides a new wear surface, and it also protects the asphalt from UV degradation, which is one of the big things that kills a road. If you notice, a new road goes in and a year later, it's light gray, and it also starts to crack. More UV degradation, the more brittle it becomes. Some of the treatments that we're looking at are U-BASS, which is an ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface. If you're on 7 highway between I-70 and 40, that surface is U-BASS. When MoDoc came in and did their work, they milled off, did an overlay, and then they put a half an inch of ultra-thin bonded on top of it, to give you an idea of what that's like. There's also a product that's called MAX, which is a modified aggregate quick, quickset surfacing. It's very tight, it's got a very small aggregate to it, it's got a smooth finish, and it's applicable to some areas where the road doesn't have much undulation to it, there's not much give and take, it just needs to be sealed really well. There's chip seal, that's popular in some neighboring communities, we'll be looking at that, and then slurry seal. And I understand that when I say slurry seal, that might pop a couple eyebrows in the group.
You see man popping right now, don't you?
Yes, sir. And I ask you to bear with me, because 10 years ago, when we slurry sealed roads, the product was a different product.
Okay.
Okay. It's much smoother today, there is still some ravelling that comes off of the top of it, but it is not the same as what it was. Now, I've been asked about how we will pick these and what we will do, and I firmly believe that probably part of it... will pick these and what we will do, and I firmly believe that probably part of this process will be to do some test strips, some roads with material on them, and let everybody take a look at it, and then give me a blessing as to what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. Most of these run in the neighborhood of the same price. Another thing I need to mention is that with all of these, there will still be a concrete component. The curves are still deteriorating, and we will still take care of the structural deficiencies in the curb. We will not do wholesale curb replacement, but where there are structural deficiencies, we will cut those out, whether they be a two-foot section or a 20-foot section, and get those replaced. And as in the past, we will focus in front of driveways, mailboxes, pedestrian areas, and on ADA ramps. So the pavement management program, fluidity. The first years are still going to be heavily weighted towards overlay. We've made it through a good portion of the city, and we are catching up to where we're getting to the newer streets. Depending on which section of town you're in, some areas were still in the mid-late 80s, some were close to the 90s. My guess is, depending on funding and costing, because the economy's coming back and some profits come back into the contractors' pricing, that somewhere in the next five years, we should be pretty close to catching up. And as we catch up, there'll be the balance of moving from overlay to surface treatment. And as the overlay component gets smaller than the surface treatment, component gets larger. On average, we can probably do two to two and a half times as much, as many roads with a surface treatment as we can with an overlay. So hopefully, we can cycle back through on the surface treatments rather quickly, relatively, to speak. We are still working from a backlog position. From 98 to 2007, there were a lot of funds that were allocated to other projects, particularly where we had match money for projects. And this is where we had to go to get the money to make those projects happen. And I think we'll all agree that the park was a pretty nice project. So it was probably worthwhile. Worked well on one foot, gave us a little bit of a corn in the other. For the next 10 years, we started, or eight years, we've been working on trying to catch up. The 2008 to 2017, we spent the $21 million, which would have had another two and a half in there, but we actually used that as a match for the Woodchapel project. Phase 2, from the railroad tracks to the roundabout at Walnut. And then, the third column is our projected from 2019 through to 2027, including the increase of $500,000 per year. As you can see, we're getting better, but we still haven't quite cracked the entire nut at this point. We played with the idea of throwing an extra $200,000 at it. What happens if we went from $28 to $3 million or to $3.2 million? And as you can see, putting another $200,000 to it really doesn't make the difference. Even $400,000, our P Q I score goes up to, or it actually drops a little bit. When it comes back up, it still settles within, oh, two and a half points of itself. 51.6 versus 54.1. So effectively, today, $200,000 would get you about 3/4 of a mile in overlay. And we're doing about 10 miles a year. With that, that's our proposed future, and I have Stanford questions.
Any questions? Councilman Levica?
Got a couple real quick ones. I think I heard you say this, but I just want to clarify. The $2.8 million in the pavement management program, does that still include $200,000 for any adjacent sidewalk defects that go along with the area you're working in? Will that continue to be a part of the practice?
Yes. With all the issues that we have to deal with, I talked about the curb. I kind of negated the sidewalk, other than the ramps. We will work on sidewalks, and we will also have our in-house crew, which is actually where the $200,000 was diverted to, was to start that program and keep it moving forward.
And the extra $500,000, where is that coming from? Is that going to come under the CIP budget as well?
That is all in the CIP budget that has been put together by staff.
So our additional CIP budget over the $2.8 is like $200,000 or something? Is that all that's left? Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, and I'll ask Christine to jump in here. We do a five-year forecast of the CIP, and Christine, her staff, they look at the revenue. They make very conservative projections on the transportation sales tax revenue that we receive. And upon an additional scrub, we believe that there will be growth in the transportation sales tax that would allow us to do that. We've also deferred a couple of projects. One of those, we had originally proposed to do is Stormwater Master Plan. As you recall, I believe that was in the current budget, and we are proposing to put that back on the unfunded list and reallocate and redirect that money to overlay in the street management program.
Okay. Thank you.
And just as, two things I want to reiterate here and hit, because it's a change in policy and change in program, is that, and Chris mentioned it, we'll be using a different formula to determine which streets get overlaid, and it may result in a change in the proportionate or the equity, if you will, from district to district. So that's going to be a change. And then redirecting the overlay funds for the Roanoke project that we have previously discussed, and that will get programmed, and that change will be identified in the CIP.
One else?
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to Merrill announcements. The month of May, we have a lot of family birthdays, but today would have been my next middle brother, who was 10 years older than me, 81st birthday, had he lived, but we lost him in 2003. But we have two daughters that was born in May, so there are just a lot of May family members born in May. This is going to bring me to Faustapunda. Tonight comes from Lauren Bacall. "Imagination is the highest kite one can fly," end quote. Now, I'm going to defer to our city attorney for a motion that Councilman Carter will so... Oh, visitors, yeah, boy, I'm getting tired. Visitors, yeah, here we go. Before we do defer to the city attorney for that motion, Paul? Pennington, you want to come on up? You going to bring Jack Wiffey, or are you going to leave him sitting? Are you going to bring him on up too? All right. Paul wants to talk to us about trash services.
Yes, sir. I've been a resident of Blue Springs since 1999, and I've ran trash here for over 25 years. I've been with different companies. I've seen the different companies. And then, just lately, if you haven't noticed, the companies have changed ownerships. I mean, there are overseas companies. There's land-based companies in the United States, but far away, and all that revenue goes there. So I've talked with my associate, Jack, who brought with me, and we discovered that we know Blue Springs. We would like to do Blue Springs, and I have no outside interest besides Blue Springs. It's time for Blue Springs to have their own trash service at this moment. I could bring in trucks. I could paint them blue. I could put Blue Springs sanitation on the side of them. That way, Blue Springs is always provided for, it's self-contained. I would dump in Lee Summit, so you're still partnering with your neighbor. Also, my fueling could be here, and I could also get property on 40 Highway to lease. Park my trucks and have the office there and work with the city as far as getting things done here. Now, as far as, I know everything comes down to price, or we come down to. And at $15 a house, I thought that would be fair, which could be appropriated through the water, through the water bill, like Kansas City does. But only difference with Kansas City is Kansas City just threw it out there for anybody. They didn't bring someone in with no outside interests besides their city. And that's where they're running into the problems now with other companies not picking up in certain areas, and city halls getting flooded with calls. I was just sitting here earlier, and I was listening to you about your road problem. That would eliminate the road problem and degradation of the roads with all these trucks going out of the city. Also, it would bring in federal money, because it would be a city contract, which that money could go to your roads, which would eliminate that. And that changed that projection for 2019. We've looked over the maps. I see Blue Springs is still expanding, just sitting here today. I've looked at the maps. It can be done. I can bring in the necessary trucks. I can also do the restaurants, the businesses here as far as four, six, eight-yard containers. I could handle that service. And then also, the roll-off boxes, as far as like events that the city put on, or just a resident, which can get a discount, and it'd be cheaper than anywhere else they would get a roll-off box to clean out their houses, garages, or et cetera. Right now, just any questions from any of you guys?
Well, let me kind of explain. We've opened that can of worms in the past. And believe you me, it was hard putting those worms back in the can. There are people in Blue Springs that showed up, and this room wouldn't hold them all, that would tell you they want their ability to choose who they want to pick up their trash. I mean, they came out of the woodworks. And also, there's a process. Even if the city chose to have its own private commission, a company to be a one source for trash, there are state statutes that govern that as well. There's notification and all those kinds of things. And this is something that was processed through our Solid Waste Commission. And they brought forth a recommendation, and we put it out there, and we pulled it. It was just no interest from the citizens. And we made the arguments, less trucks on the streets, which is the wear and tear on our streets, and all those arguments. But I tell you what, the people of Blue Springs rejected that. They wanted their freedom to choose who they wanted. So it's a competitive thing. If you had a trash service, you have to get out there and hustle, and have people want to use you. Because I'm not sure if this council wants to go down that road again.
Well, I would.
I was just going to say, though, thank you for sitting through this meeting, because this is a really long meeting. But the mayor is absolutely right. I was on the council at the time that this was discussed, and aside from individual neighborhood issues like the one we did tonight, that's probably been the most, I don't know, vocal contentious issue. Out of anything else, the citizens overwhelmingly did not want to do a single municipal service. They wanted to choose their trash service as it currently exists. So he's absolutely right.
And I will tell you, I was on that committee for a year, and that's a year of my life I'll never get back.
Well, I understand, and also, I agree with you that that was the issue back then. A lot of these neighborhoods, it went to home associations. And the reason why you had that problem then was that people wasn't paying homeowners' association dues, which then the home association would contact the trash companies to not pick up their house when they can go to an outside service. This was the problem that was going on then. I kind of did some research. And like I said, I understand where you're coming from. I did some research, and I went back and I checked all my ducks in a row. And it comes that these home associations are, want, this is what they want now. And everything in Blue Springs is turned pretty much to a home association.
Yeah, but none of those home associations have come to the city saying, "We want you to provide trash service." They go out and they make their own deals. And again, this is something that we would defer to the Solid Waste Commission to take a look at, and I think that would be your first step. But as you can tell, this council does not have the appetite to even want to get into that.
All right.
That they want to just keep the free market, and people go out and choose their own trash haulers. But I appreciate you sitting through it and making your presentation, but it's just not one that I think that the council at this point is willing to explore again.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming. I have one more visitor, and they might not even be here anymore, because it was talking about the Blue Ridge. Anybody still here from the Blue Ridge? Because that's already passed anyway. So anyway, we're going to the city attorney for a motion for Councilman Carter to so moved.
Your Honor, a motion for the council to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021, Subparagraphs 1, 2, and 9, revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel, including litigation, real estate, and negotiations with employee groups, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So moved.
Sir, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levica?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We're going to be excused to the executive conference room for an executive session.